Oh, very great. Yeah.
So is this the artist?
Well. Just you wait. Okay, I'm just.
I'm riveted.
Okay. So why don't we call the meeting to order? We have Frank, Julie, Michael, myself. I know that uh Lori's gonna be joining by Zoom, so. She'll be joining shortly. The first item is the approval of the minutes from August sixth. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion. I can make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I can second.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then no public comment today. And so the first action item that we have, the one and only, is. I believe Colin with. Third Street Center sent an email to Julie saying that. There was a sculpture at the Aspen Community School that they're looking to donate. And they wanted to see if the town of Carbondale would like it. So that is this picture. The title of the piece is called Scales of Justice by Tim Murray. Um, and currently it's at the preschool campus. This is his piece with this woman standing in front of it. In my initial thoughts are. That we've had, that it's. With the Insana Cycle being such a large sculpture and we've really struggled to find a place for it. That something also very large and yet needs to be suspended would be difficult. So my recommendation would be to pass on this specific sculpture at this time. But would love to hear anyone else's thoughts.
It's huge.
It's huge.
And I don't know, looking at how it's hanging from a building. How that would.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, Frank, there's another packet.
How that would work. Or where I, where it would work. So this is it. Scales of Justice. See.
Yeah.
I mean, I, where would you even mount that?
On a playground.
I can see kids swinging at it. Where you over at the Sopris Park where the kids play? Kids could get in here and.
That's just what what we want is sculpture that attracts people to get on top of.
Hang on it.
Right?
Yeah, and I also think that. I don't know, Scales of Justice doesn't feel very Carbondale-esque. In terms of thanatically.
What do you think, Michael?
I think that I would agree with you, Michelle, that like uh without. A clear strategy for placement installation. It's probably wise to pass on it. Yeah, I mean, I I would. I'm I'm curious when we talk about the permanent. Sculptures in a recap of the bike tour, kind of, you know, how. That whole permanent sculpture program. Looks and. You know, if there's just like a strategy when these kind of donations come to us, if we have some kind of litmus to say. Yeah, that fits with what we want. And it makes it easier to make a determination. I think absent that. It is probably a pass for me.
I think Lori's on.
She joined.
Is she there?
Yeah. She just muted. Yeah, we we didn't specifically come up with a litmus test quite yet. I would love to get there. I think it's gonna take a lot of time. The. The permanent sculpture tour was more trying to get a. Feel for conditions of all of our permanent sculpture, and I have that that we can go through in a little bit. But. In regards to this piece, I don't know. What the phrasing is for. A vote?
Well, we have enough for a quorum, right?
Yeah, everyone who wants to dig a crack at it.
Yeah, I would make a motion to uh vote to not accept that donation at this time.
I second Michael's.
No, I agree, and I I think when we get to the the sculpture bike tour, you know. I mean, this is a huge thing, and this would have to hang from a building. So I, that's. It would be hard.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that. We as a committee have many other. Things that we're trying to tackle. So I would, yes, I agree, I second.
I'm okay to pass on the two.
Okay.
Do you wanna do just an all in favor?
All in favor to pass on the donation of. Scales of Justice?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thanks.
I know some people that work at Waldorf, maybe I'll give them the picture and. I know they have some overhanging uh walkways like this, maybe able to suit their needs.
Okay, yeah. That'd be great. So then moving on to our information only, um. I wanted to give you guys an update at the Board of Trustees meeting. And I was out of town, so Lesha presented. I attached our memo that we submitted so that you guys can read through it. I'm a very visual person, so I like seeing things. So first of all, we started off with a year in review. These are things that we talked about at our last meeting, just kind of made sure to hit all the. The high notes of what CPAC completed last year. The only additional thing that Lori added was that we do have a letter of intent signed. With A and B for the purchase of Sidewinder for installation at their bank, and that will. That purchase will go through in twenty twenty six. So. Just know that it's on the horizon and that it will happen, but it'll happen in twenty twenty six. And then in terms of what Lesha had the most feedback with is the goals for twenty twenty six. Of course, there's the one percent for the arts program and just understanding, you know, how we can get involved in Chaco's Park. The pool project is kind of done, we'll have an update on that. So again, just kind of keeping. Our thumb, our pulse on what's going on with Chaco's Park. And then. She also noted about the Insana Cycle donation, just to kind of update them that that's coming down the road, that. Our intention is to submit a memo and review kind of all the details through that. But I have that later, so let's not jump into that quite yet. And um we did submit a budget request of three thousand dollars for marketing purposes. And they approved that. Which is awesome.
So I'll I'll just I'll just point out, one, Lesha put a did a great job, and it was like a very. Very professional and very uh positive presentation. I was really, really pleased with the way that she did that. And I think the board, actually Ben was just very positive, like, you know, you guys need, like, this is part of our town, you know, and actually Ben doesn't usually. Wouldn't, doesn't usually say that um quite quite so, you know, uh enthusiastically. So I think, you know, if there are things that. That are gonna make an impact, don't hesitate to to ask. There's nothing wrong with asking. And this is the time too, with with budget coming around, that if there's something in particular that's on the. You know, on the wish list or something that to to at least consider it and. No, you know, no pro- no promises, but uh know that know that that the board. Definitely acknowledges how important art is and likes to see it out and about, and so just know that, that's all.
And then one thing that Lesha did note too was that she had discussed or proposed the Fall Art Walk. And it seems, or you know, trying to like gather some momentum towards doing that. Either again, for this year, if we can kind of pull it together, or for next year, trying to make more of a game plan so that we can have two. The Board of Trustees also seemed excited about that opportunity. Which is awesome.
Well, it does bring people downtown.
Yes, it does.
Maybe not have a reception, but at least do a walk tour.
Yeah, definitely. And I think too, like. I think the feedback was from Ben that art is such an integral part of this town's identity with. The Art Walk and Carbondale Arts that to continue to foster that. Is important and supported by Board of Trustees, which is nice. So that is the memo. Moving on to our public sculpture findings.
Can I just um on the memo and the Chaco's Park stuff, is there. Value in me connecting. You with um Eric Brenlinger at Parks and Rec, or have you already made that connection?
Yeah, we've already made that connection. I was gonna connect with you. Uh possibly this week or next week about just kind of where you were with it. I know it's been a couple of years and. What your process has been with them to date so far, just handover of information. Thank you. Okay, permanent sculptures. So our bike tour was. I would say really enlightening. I think that in my mind. The permanent collection of sculptures, I don't have any images on here, there's too many to pull together. But also enlightening to know that a lot of the sculptures are in pretty good condition, like. Most of them are fine. Maybe they need to be rinsed off with some water to get rid of pollen. But all in all, again, it goes back to what Lori was saying of. They're pretty sturdy, they're pretty solid. There were some categories that I have kind of broken out in my mind was small, medium, and large. Things for us to tackle as a committee regarding. The permanent sculptures, so. It's not many, so I'll just go through all of them, but. The first one is there is a Smiley Wise sculpture that has, it's called End of Day. That has some dangly parts that are, some of them are open, some of them aren't. And so I think just connecting with him, because he's an artist who's in the valley, to come in and repair those. It's maybe five pieces that need to be repaired. It's not much. The, there's a William Morrow sculpture at the library that. All of the sculptures have plaques indicating, you know, that it's part of the permanent sculpture in town. This one didn't, and I think our biggest question with that was. Does it, is it town or is it the libraries? And if it is town, can we get a plaque for it? So again, all those same little plaques that we have for the Art Walk and Permanent Sculptures. And then there's. A Cheryl Stone, Love of a Child. There's a plaque that's just warping and it looks like it's about to fall apart, so just reprinting one of those. So that that's the small things that feel super manageable for this year. Medium items are. Several of the marble bases have rusting from the plates that have kind of stained the. Coloration of the marble below it, so I think reaching out to. Someone I know that Lori had a contact with an old miner um to possibly get those cleaned. And just do all of them all at once. So whether that's for the permanent sculpture or the rotating exhibition, so just that it looks a little more polished. And then. There's another sculpture, Gary Mitchell. The title's Draped Cannonball, which if you guys weren't there, these are a lot of names that I didn't know. But it's out by Third Street Center, and there's a pedestal between the sculpture and the marble base. It's like this white. I don't know if it's aluminum steel. Yes, this one. There's, and the pedestal in between it is totally rusted. And it just kind of looks like it's falling apart a bit. So that would be another small repair or medium repair that I have that we could work towards. Um, in my mind, the medium repairs are, we work towards quotes and possibly we repair them next year. Small, I think we can do before the end of the year. And then we have our large ones. So there is this blue sculpture out here kind of tucked into the. There's some trees, some shrubbery back there, and it looks like it. Thank you, Michael. It looks like it's in kind of, oh, not that one. It's called Herc Van Tongren is the artist by, and it's titled Big Blue. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this one. What makes it a large item is that it's a pretty. Well-known artist who has passed away, and so Lori's concern was if we restore it, is there any. Um possible way that we could devalue the piece? Because if somebody comes in and it's not the original artist who had it, could it devalue the collection? Value, and I think it's totally warrant that concern. So this is just. Taking those extra steps, get it evaluated, see. If it would devalue it, how much would it cost to do those things? Um, so this is a bigger undertaking for sure. And in the same vein as that is the Levy Break by Stephen Duro. It's the big kind of wall. It's like a big wave right across. On main, mm-hmm. And that one is probably in the worst condition. Uh, kind of like some of the seams are kind of busting. And it's, it definitely needs attention. I think, again, what makes it a large is we need to learn more about. What the cost of repairs would look like? Does that exceed the value of the sculpture, those repairs? And if it does, then would we have to decommission the sculpture? So again, very large brushstrokes I just threw out there that require much more legwork to work through each of those.
Is there any family members. Around this artist that we could maybe contact?
I know Lori has reached out to that artist. Specifically in terms of trying to understand what repairs could look like. To say, you know, oh, you just do this, this, and it's fixed, and she hasn't gotten any response from him at all. So. I think that, I don't know if. We would get a response from the family when he's still a living, breathing artist who just won't respond to emails. But I like the idea. I think too, I don't know if it's something, it's specifically around. Um Katrina, the hurricane and the levees breaking in Katrina. And maybe, I don't know if it's something that if we do wanna deaccession it, then maybe we donate it to another town down south that they pay for transportation fees. I don't know if it could withhold. Transport. So again, all things that we'll need to work through down the road. But again, small for now, medium for the future, large for later. Is just. Kind of the current plan with the temporary sculpture.
I can't remember if that paint was brushed or sprayed on. I mean, we talked about it. I can't remember what it. Anyhow, just a wild guess, you know, to take it somewhere and get it sandblasted to get all the old paint off, to prime it and spray. I don't know what's on there. It's, since it deteriorated so quick, I think it's just an enamel. But yeah, you could, you know, have somebody spray it with enamel, you could have someone spray it with something. More lasting, but anyway, a few thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Maybe up to five. If you could powder coat it, that would last forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Outlive all of us. I mean, it might be in the same price range, a few, a few four thousand. It's just a. From doing stuff in the past, just a wild guess. But anyhow, we're not looking at a few hundred. We're looking at a few thousand.
Quite a bit, yeah, yeah. And then again, too, once we have. Quotes from different, you know, vendors to do that work, it's making sure that. We're gonna choose to do that with our one percent funds to do the repairs.
Or some sculptures that just weather well, you know, they they gain a patina. You know, and but painted. Like this sculptured, I don't think it doesn't weather well, it looks defective, you know?
Mm-hmm, I would agree, yeah. This is the blue one. Um, so it definitely needs, we need it.
One back here.
Yeah, to talk more about it, for sure. Do a little more digging. So that's essentially where we got, was really just doing like a preliminary condition report. And then also just understanding, you know, some of the plaques had, you know, dates of when it was donated, and. That was not information that I had seen kind of recorded, so Lesha and I have started. Creating so a document that ideally. Is completed to the best of our ability based off of donation agreements and. You know, terms within donation agreements so that we have an understanding of what we have.
Well, on the um. The Town of Carbondale and then the Chamber of Commerce, there's both links to um the. Art Commission, and then on the Art Commission site, there's photos of the permanent collection that queue to the map. And there's a little blurb under each of them online, not a lot, but a little bit. And then there's also um photos of. The current and then past art walks. I don't know that all of the. Current art walk photos are out there.
Y- yeah, I think. My, I think they're up on our website is the current. I think I saw that recently that it is published in that same map format.
Right.
But not, you know, a blurb about each artist, that doesn't exist.
Right, right.
This is that map. Includes Helping Hands, which was deaccessioned. So I'm curious if. Like in that work of identifying what is out there, what. Condition is, if there's. Ability to update that. Map?
Just the map that's on our website to show that.
The story map one with the permanent collection.
Then now we don't have thirty sculptures, we have twenty eight, just so that it reflects what we actually have. Yeah, I can work on that with Lori.
I think the Levy Break is the one I'm most intrigued about, just because the. The. Uh, the location, the scale. And the condition feels like the most. Like in need of being addressed partly because of the location. Yeah, is there, is there any? What's the process for that look like?
That I don't know. I think that it's definitely. That it's gonna be a hairy one to untackle. I think just. In terms of, like you said, the scale, the location, if we pull it and we don't put anything in its place, it's gonna feel.
Naked.
Very naked, yes, because it's big, it's got its own concrete slab, it's got, so I think. We'll definitely have to plan strategically when we do pull it, if we decide to pull it.
But if it's repaired, would you be able to repair it where it is?
Yeah, all great questions. I don't know, yeah.
Can I just chime in without bellowing in the room? The town paid eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the sculpture in twenty fourteen. And the concrete base or pad was three, five grand. This was just before my time. Um, so there's a considerable investment in it, and the town owns it outright. It was not donated, it wasn't bought by anybody. Um, and given to the town, so the town owns it. And I've asked the artist a couple of different times about the glass block at the top. He's assured me that it's fine. So we've gone with that. Um, besides that, there's not much to maintain is what he has stated. Um, so. We wash it off and we pick stickers off of it. But it's large. And again, this was done in like twenty fourteen or fifteen. And paid for.
So I think the intention is we have to figure out. How much it'll cost to repair it, who would repair it? Think that it would be definitely outside the scope of public works. And then go from there. I think that's the starting point. Just to understand costs if we wanna, because we've already spent. Fifteen thousand on it. Is it worth maintaining that, or is it worth? Calling it quits? So I think all conversations for the future.
Well, it sounds like it was a very productive bike ride. I'm sorry I missed it.
It was fun. It was fun, Frank. I would say it was fun. Okay, moving on. We have the Insana Cycle. So. Updates on this is Lori just received the appraisal value from the appraiser. At the end of August, and so she was finally able to connect with Kevin, I believe, yesterday. In terms of just understanding kind of how things were fleshing out. And my understanding is that the appraisal value came in much lower than what Nancy was expecting it to. And so she has decided not to sign the letter of a donation. Unfortunately. So that's kind of the current status is. We can't proceed without her signing it. She had estimated a hundred thousand and the appraiser came in at eight thousand. So. Pretty drastic. Which I would understand if, you know, she, how that could be a blow if you were expecting it to be a hundred thousand, and then the appraiser came in. It was so much lower.
What, the 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 logic behind not donating at that point is that it's, it's not a like. I mean, because we we don't value it less, right, as a town?
Yeah.
It's, is it a ta- is it a tax situation?
I don't know.
Because I don't think you can write off, you can't write off art donations anyway if that was a concern. That just seems strange.
The the situation with the appraisal as instructed, directed by the town attorney was. Prices are arbitrary, right? Everybody has an emotional aspect to what their stuff is worth. Real estate or doesn't matter. Everything has a perceived value. So the perceived value was a hundred thousand dollars. So because Bill Morrow had died. There's really not a representative of his estate that's alive and that has the authority. To give away his art. Now granted, we had a letter signed by, it was William Merle. And it was also noter um witnessed. By two individuals in Carbondale. So Nancy was not even on that letter, but she is represented as the caretaker, the manager of the estate. Although probably not completely legal. So the town was all about accepting the donation. However, there could always be some relative somewhere or somebody who's gonna show up at some point and claim ownership of. Any of those sculptures sitting out in those fields. So to protect the town's interests. We had to get an appraisal done to determine a fair market value based on an independent party's value. So that was done. And that value came in at eight thousand dollars. So. If a long-lost relative or somebody who wants to hone in and say they have ownership of those sculptures. Wants to be paid, it is in the town's ble- best long-term interest. to have a separate appraisal of eight thousand dollars. So instead of fighting over a hundred thousand dollar sculpture, the price is now eight thousand dollars, which will hold up in court. So it was in the town's long-term interest to get this appraisal. It's not about the vibe or the love for Bill Morrow or the emotional aspect of it. It's purely to protect the town's interest from this day on of donation moving forward. And that's all that appraisal was intended to do and an eight thousand dollar figure is actually very good for the town.
I texted Nancy this morning. Let her settle down for a little bit and I'll just find out is this a dead deal? Um, I think that was a bit of a shock. She said she was gonna meet the appraiser out there at the end of August and that never happened. So I don't know how to appraise her. But you know, that's from her perspective. So anyhow, I'll just give it a few days and see in her mind, is this a done deal, are we dead? Is it dead in the water? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be a shame.
At the moment, it's dead in the water. But will she sign that paperwork after a few days? I don't know. I'll, I'll get ahold of her in a few.
And just see where she's at.
See what she says and I'll let you know.
I'll let you know, Lori.
Yeah, it's a shame, but.
I mean, does it, does it help if, if the town or this board or this commission sort of makes it clear that, that that that's not, that, that the appraiser is a third party and not, doesn't reflect our opinion of, of work? I mean, it seems to me like it's, it's, maybe I'm, I'm coming to it later, not understanding. I mean, it, it sounds like someone, it's more that, that someone, like about, more, more about feelings and emotion than it does about and, and not, not necessarily toward, maybe misdirected towards us versus towards a third, third party. And we, you know, we had no, you, you, I think if it had come back at fifty thousand, it would have been a, you know, an insurance difference for us, but not a, no difference in, in our appreciation or necessarily what we would have done with it. Um, as far as I understand, is that, I mean, let me know if, if I'm, if I'm not understanding it. But I don't think the opinions of or thoughts of this, this commission or the board for that matter, or the town, you know, have anything to do with the appraisal, the appraisal part. Does it, I mean, does it? Am I missing something?
No, I don't, no, I don't think so. Yeah, maybe she just needs a little time to cool off and it was a shock to see such a drastically low number to her. I mean, that would be offended too, you know, it's not unreasonable, her reaction. Um, but also it's ultimately her choice.
I'll, I'll just say that it, that's not the, the only reason. You know, um, she's kind of pushing back on her role in the whole process. So maybe she's not really authorized to sign it over. So I think there were a few other issues that were lumped into the appraisal. Um, so you know, that's kind of come to light that, okay, you know, maybe you weren't exactly authorized to um, facilitate this donation.
Well, that would be good to flush it out before it happened.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And I think it's good, I think it's good for the process.
Very good.
So Laura, do you think that we should just wait and see? What's your recommended?
Well, what I've been directed is just, it's done until it's done, you know? We can't do anything else and so if it's her decision and um, we'll leave it at that.
I'll talk to her. Frank, I appreciate that. I mean, I think, you know, you met with her. You've had some communication um, before Bill passed. Um, I hope that she understands that it seemed like his wish was that that was displayed in Carbondale and that we appreciated the offer, the donation. Um, you know, like has been said, I, I think that it's like an emotional process for her probably. Uh, hopefully that, um, she has a change of heart about that. I think as a commission, we've been very excited about it and when you communicate with her, I hope you can relate that.
I mean, I was there in the room when he signed the letter and he expressed his wishes to donate that piece of his work to the town of Carbondale, that's his wishes, so. Like Ross, I mean, I don't, it doesn't really matter if it was valued at a dollar or a million dollars. We're gonna pay to bring it here, we're gonna pay to mount it, we're gonna pay to you know, display it and maintain it in perpetuity. And maybe bark at it a little bit, you know, or, you know, have a plaque on it and stuff, you know, and that's what, that's Bill's wishes, so. I think Nancy will come around, I think right now she's, I don't know, I can't speak for her.
And then um, kind of an update, I think for Michael and Julie was on our bike tour, we were assessing other locations. Because Third Street Center, there were some issues with irrigation, um, and it would have, I don't, it was just too difficult to put it there basically with irrigation lines and power lines. And so Lori had found this awesome location at the base of Red Hill and it fitted perfectly. And on our bike tour, we all went out, Lori had spray painted the dimensions so that we could kind of see what it would look like in the space and we were all thrilled with it. And so that was what was presented also to the Board of Trustees and Ross. I believe that the Board of Trustees was okay with that location.
Okay, I'm not, I, was that, I, I may not be, I may. I'm not sure, was that present, was that presented, that, that space in particular?
I think you said she did. So, um, but it's, we felt as though, you know, it's, it kind of fit the space perfectly because it's not a super polished, super manicured sculpture. It's not like it's a carved marble or, you know, so it felt like the environment in which it would be placed, which we thought was nice. In addition to, um, I think it was Lesh who had said she would always see people pulled over and taking photos with it. And so to have kind of like a designated parking lot made sense so that people could pull off and it wouldn't impede traffic or anything like that, so. In our memo that we were planning on proposing, once we had everything sorted, that it would be at the base of Red Hill.
But adjacent to the upper parking lot?
Yes, let me see if I have a photo.
So away from the freeway?
If you turn, if you're coming one thirty-three and you cross eighty-two and you wanna go to Red Hill Trails, you turn left into a parking lot. Right there where you turn, it's right to your left. Now, it's a little sunken, sunken earth and the thought was it would build that up with road base, they would do their concrete piers and make it kind of level with the parking lot. I think.
So you can see we turned in here.
Oh, yeah.
There, the stake was like the middle of sculpture.
Okay.
And Lori had talked about doing some, you know, landscaping some of the boulders to help protect it also.
Know exactly where that is.
Are there, are there any concerns with vandalism in that spot in particular, since it's kind of far away from town center? And, and not necessarily well lit at night. Well, just, 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 I don't, I don't know how that, how that spot works. Um, I'll, I'll be honest, if that's, that maybe not where I would, like, for such a cool piece. And I know that's a town, that's town property, it also feels like a little bit of a stone's throw from our, our heart. Um, so I don't, I don't know if it's my place to, to put, put something out there and I'll, I'll default, or de, de, uh, I'll, I'll go along with whatever this CPAC says, but, but I don't, if there, if there are other concerns, um, I think just make sure that we address them.
Yeah, and we have really struggled with the scale of it.
Yeah.
It's so big, it's really, really big.
I went out today on my bike, looking for maybe another place. That's just how my brain works, I wanna explore all possibilities before I narrow it down to the whatever it'll end up being. Ernesto, the buffalo, is in front of the city market property. And it's on a slab of marble. That, that slab of marble is cockeyed, it's not parallel with the path or the road. Corner to corner, that's a hundred thirty-two inches. Corner to corner, or, or tire print to tire print of Insana Cycle's a hundred thirty-nine inches. Seven inches longer. If, this is a huge if. If we could move Ernesto somewhere else, we could put Insana Cycle on that slab where Ernesto lives.
Yeah, I know.
Still thought, and I thought, well, what about moving Ernesto fi- forty feet to the south, to the left, more in front of the gas station. And then I thought, well, why, why did I just put Insana Cycle there? So I talked to Lori this morning, I went and met her and then I went, and she said I should talk to Kevin Shoresman, the Public Works Director. I emailed Kevin and he said he didn't like that idea because of underground utilities, uh, sprinklers, I don't know if they are sprinklers there, they don't turn them on because it's all dead. Um, and it's the beginning of a de-acceleration lane to turn in the city market in front of the gas station. So anyhow, that was Kevin Shoresman's thoughts. I think somewhere in there would be a wonderful place for it and it's lit and it's seen and there's traffic day and night. You could pull off into the gas station, kind of like you did in the co-op, but anyhow, it's not my decision and I don't even know if we're still getting it, so. But if we could move Ernesto and Lori said there's, you know, there, there's a donation agreement and there might say something in there about the location. Now, the location was down in front of the field that CRM has owns, the Hayfield. I know people online, when it got moved, said, oh, we, it was better over there, the buffalo belongs out in the field, you know? And uh, you know, I, I would, I, I would tend to agree with that. Um, it looked better there than it, at its current location. Um, but anyhow, I went on on a limb by myself and did that.
Well, thank you for taking the time.
Tossing it out to us.
Yeah, yeah, I think that with that donation agreement, we'll have to just triple check that we, e- even if we can move Ernesto. I do think that Ernesto is pretty successful there personally, I think he's on that pedestal, I think he's in a great spot. And I think too, just, it's a lot of moving of items. So I would love to find a successful home for the bike without having to move, change things around ideally, if we can. That's just my two cents.
Well, the only reason to move Ernesto is that we don't wanna put a sculpture thirty feet to the south or fifty feet or whatever it is. There's a light pole, there's a light pole there and there's a, a tree to the left. You can see, um, there's a nice spot for it and behind it's kind of open. It's a little to the right of the gas station, so you know, the view plane is out there, so, but.
Well, now with the new crosswalk coming in.
The crosswalk is, yeah, it's right over here. It's right, it's kind of not far from Ernesto. Ernesto's right.
Very, he's right on top of the.
He's right here and it's just very close. I thought if Insana Cycle could go there, that would be fabulous, but.
What I do like about the current plan at the base of Red Hill is that Kevin has signed off on it.
Yeah, if the Red Hill is the spot, I'm, you know, I'd just like to get it here. Honor Bill, winner of Carbondale, local legend.
Definitely.
If I ran the zoo, I'd put it in town, but I don't run the zoo, I'm just a monkey in it. So, you know, if it ta- if it goes to Red Hill, that's the, the only way we can get it here, then okay, fine, that's my two cents.
Okay. Appreciate it, I appreciate you taking the extra effort too, Frank, for sure. So, marketing committee. So I added this as a line item. At our last meeting, Julie agreed to lead the marketing efforts with Chris as her assistant. So I added this as a line item, hoping, you know, that we can come up with a template, an idea of pre, post, during art walk stuff. Um, and then as they need members additional support, that we can talk about it and people can raise their hand to support the upcoming deadlines. So Julie, do you have anything for today?
Well, Chris and I have not um, made very much progress at this point. And one of the first things that I need to do is to connect with Lori to kind of get a, like the current state on what she's doing and try to figure out how we might be a little bit more front-end loading. You know, particularly on um, trying to promote the event so people can see it like in the newspaper or other places where maybe we can get more information out there ahead of time. Not that we want an, you know, five hundred people coming to a reception, I think that would be hard to handle, it'd be great. Um, but then trying to figure out how we can be more aggressive in marketing these artists after the event. And, you know, I can, I've been looking around at what other groups do in different communities for their art walks, how they host things on their websites and such as that. But it's really um, difficult to see how they are actually marketing them, you know, unless you're in that community. And the other piece of marketing is, um, who can we target as a group in the community that are the people that might buy the art? I mean, is it architects, is it landscape architects, is it interior decorators? Is it real estate agents that write quarterly reports that are blasted out to who knows how many people? And if we can come up with some kind of a list of how, whom we might wanna blast, then we have to have a way to link them to information about the sculptures that are there. Um, so I'm gonna reach out to Lori to see about connecting with her on what the town has done in the past and where she actually sees there's some opportunities as well. And we'll start there, but I think to brainstorm, another one I thought about um, is the Planning and Zoning Committee. We had, I mean, there's a new, a big new building going up, uh, the Mainline Social. It's that new restaurant, you know, maybe we target some new construction people. Call them just outright and say, here's what we've got, we've got this art. Because it would be great to not only promote and sell what we have, but to promote these artists. I mean, the artist that created the piece in front of Town Hall, I mean, she's well-regarded, she's got stuff all over the place. And on the front end, before the art walk, if we can get some material together about what's been selected, photos, information about the artist and just pretty much put it in a packet and give it to the newspaper. I mean, if, if you give them stuff and then they come and they look, you've already done a lot of the work for them, I think you're gonna get more written up.
That would be exciting.
You know, Soper Sun, Post Independent, um, Aspen. But it's trying to figure out. But it's trying to figure out how we get to the people that would actually purchase the art.
Yes, difficult.
Right, so um.
Is, is that the primary goal, you think? Is it's not attracting visitors to see the exhibition? It's not attracting new artists?
Oh, I think all of it can go hand in hand, because if you come up with a track record and you're selling art, these artists are gonna want to come here. You know, I think, and I also think it's a great community event. And the more that we can get people to come and walk and do the art walk when we do it in the, the spring. And then maybe we do it in the fall. I think that's great to get people into Carbondale.
I agree.
Yeah, just for uh, like background uh. Piece that Lori mentioned, or you had mentioned in the memo that's going to AMB. That was kind of a similar thing to what you're describing with Mainline Social.
Right.
A little bit in that AMB had presented to P and Z. They said, oh, we want to put art here so that we can. Um, you know. Integrate this new project into the community. And part of that proposal approval was them committing to putting a sculpture there. And they had reached out to the creative district to say, like, what is this, what can this look like? Similar to like what we did with the storage unit project. And I'd sent them. The like sculptures from last year and the sculptures that were coming up this year. And so they were like, oh, this would be a great fit. So then I just connected them with Lori and she handled that, like, agreement side of things. So I think. Um, when those projects come up, there's no requirement that they include art. But it is in the one percent that like, we should be encouraging them to do that. And right now, there's no, there's no process for that. Right? So it, it is on us to make those connections in the community, know. Those people, make sure they're aware of the work that we're doing. And or talk to P and Z and say, hey, when you're approving these projects, can you recommend that they look at this? And um, you know, that's, that's maybe a little bit of uh, effort on, on our part. But in, you know, it's maybe not just marketing, but I think making that connection with P and Z. So that they're aware that there's a precedent um, of that happening and that we're. Actively trying to promote the sale of these sculptures and that developers. Are one of the audiences um, for those purchases could be effective.
And I think it's like a dual promotion, right? It's like, they get credits for placing art in an art community. But it also helps us fund ideally purchasing these sculptures and maintenance of our permit program. So. It would be wonderful. You good, marketing update?
That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Julie. That's not, so, that's a lot that you got to figure out. So thank you.
And Michelle, just for a little bit more background, Nick DeFrank, who I believe is the Chair of the P and Z Commission. Uh, is also the landscape architect on the Chaco's Park Project. So if you do meet with him, that's, you could put a bug in his ear on that.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you. Connecting all the dots. Okay, so our last item is the Aquatic Center, the one percent. So I got an update from Eric and he had just said, you know, can you just pass this information along to CPAC? In terms of a general update. And so that's the last photo in here, in our packet. Or else you don't get one of those.
I was gonna say.
You'll know what it is though. Um, so essentially, in twenty twenty-four February. Uh, this Land and Shelter presented to CPAC about integrating these glass blocks. As, you know, an architectural element, that maybe it's not a sculpture or a mural. Or something you would think in more of a traditional sense of artwork. But CPAC approved of these glass blocks being the one percent for that project. And so essentially, this photo, which isn't very high quality, um. Is a photo of this sample of what they look like that's up at the pool right now. And my understanding is that the Board of Trustees approved of this sample, so this will be going forward.
And this will, this will be backlit.
Just to some, to some, yeah, to some extent, there's.
I think, there, there's red block, cinder block, and then they painted right side white.
Yeah, I saw that. That's where this will be.
I think this is where the white is and the rest of it'll just be.
Yeah, the white stuff, this is only going where the white is.
Yeah, yeah, but that's a pretty, I don't know, third or fourth of that building, so.
A lot of area. I'd go by today.
I think it'd be pretty cool backlit.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it looks nice.
Has anyone, you know, the Forest Service building's nearing completion, and that's pretty darn close to the sidewalk. The pool is quite a ways back from the sidewalk. And I don't know what's between the building and the sidewalk, but is there potential for a piece of art? With this backdrop of this block wall and, and it's probably some trees and bushes and vegetation, I'm sure. But I don't know, is there any, has anyone, has there ever been talk about, because there's quite a bit of room there?
Yeah, my understanding is that, so Lush and I had a meeting with Kevin a couple of weeks ago now. Um, and because the, the new ranger station is under federal. That it doesn't apply to the same one percent for the font, so. They don't have to.
Talking about the pool, the pool property.
Oh, you're talking about the pool property?
Yeah, the building's set back quite far from the sidewalk. Like, you could have multiple sculptures there.
Yeah, there's been no, I've heard nothing about adding sculpture. Beyond that, and maybe that's where permanent sculpture locations in the future that we allocate.
I'd have to pull up the, the diagram, but there's, I mean, there's a landscaped island of some sort and it's also integrated with a bus stop. So there's a couple of things that are happening in that space and like a bench or something. I'm not sure it's impossible, but I don't, I, I would have to. I don't have it, I don't have it on hand.
Is there a rendering of the completed?
Yeah, there's a couple of renderings, but.
There actually is a, there is a rendering on the fence.
See how quick I can get there.
On uh, on Seventh Street. I can't, I can't, I gotta go look at it again. But I just, I just was going by and I was like, there's a lot of space between the sidewalk and the. Building.
Food for thought?
It looks like there's three, three or four street trees. So sidewalk, building, that, tree, tree, trees.
Did that already happen?
Actually there, but it's covered.
Yeah, I can send this to you if you'll.
Around the corner, tree. Ten foot setback, oh, fifteen foot setback.
To the sidewalk. There's also a bus stop. The bus stop will move back there, so.
Something maybe tall and vertical that, you know. Something like that would be real nice, the building behind it.
Keep our eye out.
Probably not, probably not impossible at some point to consider, given the size of some of the sculptures here. I mean, it's not an Insana Cycle space, but. But there's probably, and probably one of those beds wouldn't, wouldn't, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good idea.
Like the one in front of six eighty-nine, the forged.
Yeah, the tall.
Three things that are blue. That in front of that building would be kind of nice, something like that. Tall, vertical. Compact.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I like the idea of.
Maybe something long, it's like two big wheels.
Right at the bus stop. Yeah, my goal is to be able to get to a point where we can identify possible locations for permanent sculptures in the future. And I think that that would be a great location to keep in mind as a starting point for that endeavor.
And then I don't know, maybe you could do a. Hey, we have a spot. We have all this art around town. These pieces would fit. Anyone wanna?
Donate.
Put your name on it?
Absolutely. Creative idea, Frank. You're full of them.
And like all the art in town, like. I don't know where it came from. I know Ernesto was bought by a citizen. That's all I know. I don't know where the, any of the rest of it came from. But um, in a lot of places, people want their name on it.
Yeah.
The, the Michael Foundation, you know? You know, billionaire Michael over here, he wants his name and red lights, you know, and uh. Like I worked up at Anderson Ranch, every building's got someone's name on it. The kiln yard, there's the so-and-so kiln and the so-and-so kiln. The so-and-so wood-fired kiln. I mean, there's a name on everything there that someone wrote a large check. Now, there's a lot of anonymous too. People don't want their name, but a lot of people like their name on it when they spend. Some of the money. Just, just an idea, marketing committee.
Awesome. So that's all that I have for today.
But I thumbs up the idea of identifying other potential sites.
That way we just are like, here, you want to donate it? It's gonna go here.
And then maybe, you know, maybe we do another bike tour sometime and, and then rate them like. Would this be easy, you know? Just put a base, a block and put a piece of art and blah, we're done. Or is it like the Third Street, oh, we gotta deal with sprinklers, we gotta deal with. Overhead power lines, that may be more difficult, you know, maybe I could rate.
Sounds like an inventory of locations.
Or like a library, there's a spot already, you know, where the grass is, and I think there's a base.
Oh, at the library, yeah.
There's Bill Morrow's piece, that, kind of the tall grass, there's a base sitting in there with nothing on it. You know, that'd be an easy one. You just need something tall. That is above the grass, you know? That's an easy, easy, easy peasy one. But, you know, again, another bike tour will go around. And maybe we need a map of Carbondale property. And then do it again, you know?
That's something you would want to lead, Frank?
Oh, sure.
Okay, I like it.
It was great, the bike tour. I, I had no idea we owned so much art.
We own a lot of art.
Isn't it, wasn't it wonderful? And most of it's pretty good. You know, some pretty good art we own.
Yeah, definitely.
That's kind of cool.
Yeah. There's a lot, a lot.
That would keep it going, you know?
Keep it rolling. We're trying with this Insana Cycle. Um, okay, so. Any last minute comments or should we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we need a second?
No, do a second. Yeah, all in favor?
Yes.